I'll see if it, I move if it.
Hope this is on you?
Okay.
Are we all set?
Have you, you tell me when you're ready and I'm ready.
We're all set. Technology is up and working like it should.
Hey. Hello everyone, this is Mayor Bovee calling in from home. I am sick. And the plan is that I am going to get the meeting started and then I'm going to pass it off to someone else. But I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask everyone to stand and say your allegiance. Thank you. And Mr. Seagull, please call the rolls.
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia, present. Alderman Santiago.
Here.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallit.
Here.
Alderman Careto Munos.
Here.
Alderman Demus.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Present.
Alderman Murano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Thank you. We have a call. And at this point, I will ask if there are any objections to me appearing remotely at this point.
It is worth noting for the record that Mayor Bovee did provide a timely notice of more than four hours before the meeting, requesting the ability to participate remotely and that his reason of being ill is a valid reason under our electronic attendance policy.
So now we just need a motion from one of the city council members to allow him to appear remotely.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
I'll second that.
And Alderman Demus seconds.
Okay. All in favor?
If you could, Mayor, please ask if anyone is a host.
Is anyone a host?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. So just to give a little preview here, I plan to lead things through with comments and then cast things off. So I have spoken with Alderman Beebe and I would entertain a motion to suspend rules to change the order so that I can give my mayoral comments at the beginning in case I don't make it through the whole meeting. And Alderman Beebe, if you want to bring that motion.
All right, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to move item number 15 on the agenda, amend the agenda, move number 15 to prior to number four, public participation. Seconded by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Mr. Mayor, it's floor of yours.
Okay, so when I was anticipating was that we could have comment and then I would make my mayoral comments. Is that how we did it or didn't get it? The other way around?
Oh, I put you first.
You were placed first. It is worth knowing, I don't believe we received any slips from the audience to speak today.
I'll be missing anyone from the audience who desire to speak in remote cover?
No one has raised their hands or stood up. There will also separately be the proclamations that we will read.
Yes, thank you. And just to make sure I'm not inflicting too much pain on you guys, is the audio okay? Can you hear me okay for the audience?
I request, if you're not speaking, can you mute your line? I think that probably is the same.
I could not hear that comment.
That comment was asking that if anyone who's not speaking can mute their line. I don't know that we have any of the microphones up. I.
I think she might be, do you mean his, his zoom in the background? So Mayor, if you had zoom running in the background, you have your, maybe you have your microphone or you have that, you can hear the audio in the background. So we can hear the feedback.
Yeah, we, there's an echo.
Yeah, so if you could mute your, your zoom.
Walk away from it.
Yeah. It is muted. We're going to try something different. Tell me if that is better. Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're getting lots of nots.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Yes, thank you. I did not want to inflict too much pain on you guys' ears there. So what I wanted to comment on in my mayoral comments tonight, one of the things that we have been listening to the community over the last six weeks has been the question of the grocery tax. As you, many of you are aware, at the end of 2025, the state has lowered the grocery tax by 1%. So as of January 1st, that 1% would disappear off grocery, grocery bills. And the intent was to lower taxes for the more vulnerable population. I had indicated previously that I was against the idea of reinstating that 1% grocery tax because I, I did not in principle like the idea of placing the burden of that tax directly back onto the most vulnerable of our population. A lot of people in our, in our, in our town have told me that they are bothered by our high taxes and a lot of that is the state and things that we can't control. And yet if in our first opportunity to control something as a city, we go ahead and place that tax right back on the people, but I can't in fairness, we can't complain about the state or anyone else's taxes. That would be on, that would be on us. Having listened to the community for the last six weeks or so, six to eight weeks, my position has changed a little bit. I had indicated that I would be open to the 0.25% sales tax. And in the future, I might be, but at this point, I, I don't think that there is the desire in our community or in our city council to raise that tax, the, the sales tax, the 0.25%. And so at this point, my recommendation, and the city council is going to vote in a little bit on two separate measures. But my recommendation is that we don't pass either, either the grocery tax or the sales tax. If, if the council feels like, because this is our one and only chance to institute that tax and we want to have that as a possibility for the future, there is a mechanism by which we could put it on books but not apply the tax unless the city council chooses to do that in the future. I would be okay with that as well. But I wanted to say that my lead of our community right now is that neither of those proposed tax increases makes sense. And I would recommend that we, that we say no to both of that. Doesn't mean that in the future that there would be, that there might not be some, you know, strong reason why we would need to impose a tax of some sort. But if we do that, I think we need to be able to give the community a very good and clear reason why it is needed and why it is for their benefit. And I don't see that right now. So that's my, that's my, that's my comments. The, the council is going to have a chance to debate and note on that in a little bit, but I wanted to, I wanted to express that. The other thing I wanted to do is just remind everyone that we have a Mexican Independence Day celebration coming up. And everyone is invited for that. It's going to be on Sunday, the 14th of September. Mexican Independence is the, is the 16th of September, but we wanted to do that on weekend. And so everyone is invited to that. Todos están invitados a la celebración del día de independencia de México el 14. So those are my, those are my comments and thank you for the opportunity. And I would at this point recommend that Alderman Beebe, the, the temporary chair of this meeting and entertain a motion as such.
Okay, Alderman Murano and, and motion and Alderman Switek.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, one thing I missed, maybe somebody can also make an announcement about the ice cream social at the Coop's House on Saturday. And with that, I'm out. I will be here and participate if necessary, but I am at this point turning it over to Alderman Beebe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next on the agenda is public participation. We have not received any forms of public participation. So one last call if anybody wants to talk. Seeing none, we're going to move on to item 4A, a proclamation. Proclamation. Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Whereas Sea Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the United States from September 15th to 21st, 2025. Whereas 2,252 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 749 personal injuries and were responsible for 268 fatalities in the United States during 2024. And whereas 1,465 pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States, resulting in 821 pedestrians being killed and another 644 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way during 2024. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad wide of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, Inc., United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, and county and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Therefore, Daniel Bovee, Mayor of the City of West Chicago, do hereby attest his full support, proclaiming September 15th to 21st, 2025, National Sea Tracks Think Train Week, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. We also have item 4B, another proclamation, and I know there's folks in the house tonight for this. This is for the League of Women Voters. A proclamation to recognize the 70th anniversary of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton. Whereas the continued success of our representative type of constitutional government depends upon maximum participation by an informed electorate. And whereas special emphasis must be made to assure that all those entitled to vote shall be able to vote in national, state, and local elections. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Wheaton serves communities of Carroll Stream, Warrenville, West Chicago, Wheaton, and Winfield by providing candidate forums, voter registration, civic education, candidate meet and greets, and candidate positions to the public to maximize voter turnout. And whereas from its inception, the League of Women Voters determined that it would be nonpartisan, either supporting nor opposing any political party or individual candidate. And whereas, the League of Women Voters of Wheaton will celebrate its 70th anniversary on September 22nd, 2025, and has approximately 150 members from all five of its communities. And now therefore, the City of West Chicago declares the week of September 22th through 29th, 2025 as League of Women Voters Week in West Chicago, and urge all of our residents and organizations to support the worthy endeavors of the League of Women Voters in its efforts to encourage participation by all voters, so that at the proper time and in the proper manner, the full voice of West Chicago may be expressed, proclaimed the second day of September, 2025. So those, those who are here from the League of Women Voters typically ask if you'd like to come up and speak or say anything or have any words that you'd like to say? We can certainly take a picture too. If anybody wants to come down and join them, I. We want to, if you want to go, anybody who wants to come down and take a picture, there is. I'm sure we'll get a sign, we'll get a sign, we'll get a sign up.
I wish.
Where?
We can stand right up here.
You want to go and stand up in front of the house?
So we can get all the council members and. And then.
Pro-Ten Mayor Beebe.
It's temporary mayor, not mayor pro-Ten.
That's okay. Watch your step. Just so we can get everybody in.
Yeah.
Come on, Julie.
Al's not doing it.
Surely that's something you care about as a veteran.
Well, that's a, that'll ruin your picture.
Can't see me, I can't see you.
Hold that, wait for Tia. Yeah.
He's going to have to go in the front. Yep, sorry.
Great spot.
Anybody else want to join us? Because I'm like, why do I have to?
Do you have a wide angle?
No, it's, it's which here, can you still be behind Juliana?
Yeah.
No, no, you still. It's a school teacher in me.
All right, I'm not sure if I have everybody.
Yeah.
Everyone see? Sorry, I cannot see your face. There we go. All right, give me just a moment. Do you want to pull that proclamation out? Can we put that just in front? All right, thank you. Sorry for the delay in your meeting.
Oh gosh, don't worry.
No, we're good.
Thank you to the city council and to the mayor for this proclamation. And the League of Women Voters has been doing this for 70 years, registering voters and doing Candidates Night. The last one was so successful, we had over 200 people come and listen to the candidates and we're very proud of that. We want to encourage everyone to get out and vote and do whatever you can to make sure that our elections are fair and honest.
All right, the next item on the agenda, item number five, discussion and possible action to approve city council meeting minutes. We have items A, B, C, D, and E. We'll do this a group.
You don't want to do them as a group if there's no.
No, I would do it one by one. Do it one by one? All right, at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of August 13th, 2025, subtopic consult. Then moved by Alderman Myers. Second by Alderman Switek. Sorry, I've lost, it was Alderman Myers, who I've lost for a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item 5B, August 13th, 2025, meeting on tax. Do I see a motion? Alderman Murano, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Okay, that's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5C, August 18th, 2025, regular session minutes. Right, can I get a motion? Alderman Hallit, seconded by Alderman Myers. Any discussion? All right, we're going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5D, August 18th, 2025, executive session litigation. Do I see a motion? Alderman Switek, seconded by Alderman Avinia Soto. I'll make a carload, but then I'll get in trouble. All right. Any discussion? Oh, we can't discuss. All in favor? That carries. All right, item 5E, August 18th, 2025, executive session based around personnel issues. I see Alderman Demus is making a motion, second. Alderman Murano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If anybody still has those envelopes with those confidential minutes, if they could pass them up there to the front to Tia, that would be appreciated. Thank you. That brings us to item number six, the discussion of possible action to approve the corporate disbursement report from September 20th, September 2nd, 2025. Alderman, Alderman Demus can make the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve in the amount $851,534.46.
Seconded by Alderman Avinia Soto. That says, what, hold on. Any discussion?
Yeah, before wondering, I'm just like, to have like an update on this contracting with S, no, C, Savo Contracting, Inc., because it's over $400,000 and I would like to see now it is going if it only works if this year or.
What did I write on him again?
Yeah, it's on page number two.
Page two. C Savo Contracting?
Yeah, it's, it's the 400,000, 409,000 to 100,000. It's the total of those added up. Yeah, yeah, I just want to see like an update of like, oh, it's fairly.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, the C Savo Contracting, Inc. is actually the general contractor that's working on our Bishop and Brown CDVG project. And how that project works is every month it looks a bit of a estimate. Once we do the pay estimate, then we process the pay estimate. Sometimes the multiple pay estimates take a little bit of while because this is a CDVG project, Community Development Black Line project that requires a lot of original paperwork signed in blue ink that we send us with to the county. A lot of times that paperwork takes a while for the county to approve it. So once we get through all that stuff, sometimes they get it stacked up and everything is processed that once. So that's why you see three pay estimates past that once. Thank you.
This. Alderman Murano. This contract was also approved previously by this council. Yeah, that correct. You just want to select how the updates are constructed.
Yeah, so we would have been done by now. District 33 had a request of us before we were about to get done with the project. We have paving left to do and some striping work and final restoration work left to be done on that project. And right at the start of the school week, they started midweek. And so they had requested us to not do construction that week because there are a lot of students coming in and out, getting used to the middle school routine and everything. And there are a lot of teachers coming in and out that week. So they had asked us to delay the construction for a week, which actually put us behind two more weeks because the following week, the contractor wasn't available to do the paving work that's required. So now the completion date is extended to September 12th.
Thank you.
I hear. All right, any additional discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Sheehan.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Hallit.
Aye.
Alderman Careto Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That passes. All right, item number seven on the agenda, the reading of the proposed consent agenda. The two items on the consent that tonight were not sent to committee. Item A, 7A, concur with the mayor's appointment of Alderman Beebe to the Downtown Revitalization Commission. Item 7B, concur with the mayor's appointment of Alderman Myers to the Downtown Revitalization Commission. Now we have a motion to establish the consent agenda. Does anybody want to remove anything from consent prior to that? Seeing no removals, I'd entertain a motion to establish consent agenda. Alderman Murano, do you want, oh, sorry, that was not a motion?
No.
Go ahead.
Did you want to separate those on the kind of members here that may want to abstain from those? Yeah.
Okay, we can sep, we can separate the motions. I would entertain a motion for whoever. Wow, that's going to be interesting.
Perhaps you choose to, someone may choose to pull both items from consent agenda.
Yes, please.
Let's. I, I move to remove item B from the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item 7A from the consent agenda.
I'll second any of those.
It's, it's not. I don't know if it moves a motion, is it? Because we, because we established consent after that for people to remove.
Well, we didn't establish consent.
We, yeah, we haven't established consent yet, so.
That's what I'm saying, we don't need a motion, we just need to remove and then we just. So I will, I will, I will move on to number eight, a motion to establish consent. There is no consent agenda. At this point.
I would, it makes it move.
I would, I would, I believe we'll just skip item number eight.
Yes.
As there's no need to discuss that matter. Motion to approve items on the established consent agenda. Number nine, there is no consent agenda, we're skipping number nine. Item number 10, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve item 7A. Moved by Alderman Demus.
Yes, I make a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of Alderman Beebe to the Downtown Revitalization Commission.
Can I see a second? Well, you're Alderman Smith. That's a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
I have sense. I didn't, I didn't actually say anything, so I'm staying. Item number 7B, do I like to get a motion? Alderman Murano. Alderman Alcantara Garcia is the second. Any discussion? Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Abstain.
Wow, this is fun. Any reports by committees, number 11. Seeing none, we'll move on to number 12, unfinished business. We have two items on the table. Would anybody like to remove anything from the table this evening?
Or to discuss it?
Is there a remove from the table to discuss or just only to take action?
Just to take action.
So, we could.
We can discuss.
Yeah, discussion.
You discuss it.
And then decide if you wish to remove to take action.
Okay. Just to take action. All right, so we'll move on to item twelve A. Ordinance number twenty five oh zero zero two one, and ordinance amending chapter sixteen, article two. Of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Chicago to increase the home rule municipal retailers occupation tax. And the home rule municipal service occupation tax. For those of you who want that translated in English, that would be the sales tax that you pay on, on items uh, for, for general sale, not groceries. Is there any discussion on that item that needs to be had? Alderman Rondo.
Uh, yeah, this will probably apply to both, but it was nice to hear Mayor Bobby come around to um. Not wanting to pass either one of these tonight, um, it was really nice to hear from our constituents as well. Not wanting to raise sales tax, hopefully that has encouraged our council to, to be with the mayor and.
Alderman Alcantara, Chris, you.
I do wish to wait. A little more um. To uh, get more input from the people, I'm also receiving a lot of uh. Feedback and I just would like to have more, more time to cannibalize and listen more to what they're saying. And um. Hopefully, we, we still have time. In the next. Meaning to be able to. To decide. Make a final decision.
That emotion at table? Hmm, that emotion.
It's still table.
It's still, yes. Any additional discussion on twelve A? All right, that item remains, so unfortunate. Sorry, there was a first back comment too.
Uh, I agree with Mayor Murano, Mayor Alderman Murano. Having other options, you know, being like, not having to vote for either or, like, having the option to, like, reduce the taxes for one side, it's a good idea to do it this time.
Alderman Demus?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would not disagree, but uh, once again, I, I did hear the mayor say that uh. We would implement, is that what I heard him say, that we would implement the grocery tax without? Taxing for the time being to see how it goes, is that?
My understanding of what he said was that an option that he would not be opposed to would be to approve the grocery tax. But then. Pull back actually implementing the tax so that it's something that we have on the books. And that would allow us to have that as a potential revenue option.
It gives us more flexibility.
I am still here.
Oh, if you can clarify your position, please.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Demus, you stated it quite well. There's two options I would. Define with, uh, one is just not passing either, and then the second is. What was described as putting it on the books but not implementing it uh. Until the council takes further action, which could be an indefinite period of time.
Alderman Demus?
Oh, yeah, just a follow-up question then, um. Personally, I, I, I would love not to tax anybody anything, but um, I know we have bills that we need to pay and we do have a budget that we have to meet. Um, and I just, I know the city is looking at ways to uh, possibly cut spending and or um, bring in more options for income. Um, so personally, I think it, it would be a safer thing to at least have it on the books. Not use it, hopefully, we will never need it. Um, but if we do come to the point where we will, um, and I had stated this also in the finance committee that. Um, this is a tax that has been ongoing from the state for I don't even know how long. And so, I know in my household, we've accounted for that, it's just part of what we know. That's what we're gonna pay, and so if it's less, that's great. But if it's something that we've already accustomed our household to, um, I don't think it impacts as much. That's just what I, the way I feel about it, so.
Alderman Myers?
Um, yeah, so I, I, I am against the sales tax increase, uh, primarily because uh, we. In two consecutive years, we raised the sales tax a quarter percent, so we went up half a percent two years. Uh, I don't think we should go another quarter percent, so that's the major reason why I'm against the sales tax increase. Um, as far as the, the grocery tax, I think, you know, we had the, the wonderful revenue workshop. A while ago, uh, and we basically like broke, like practically even uh, for um, for twenty twenty four. And we're looking at basically breaking even for twenty twenty five, and that's with the grocery tax. So, we're basically saying like, we will be under, under budget by almost half a million dollars. Uh, if we decide not to ever let the grocery tax, and I'm not super comfortable with that.
I would like to say. That um. That's not. Altogether correct because we have not yet passed a budget. So, I would concur that we should not pass a budget which. Which proposes to, uh, uh, to be, uh, to have a five, there's four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar deficit. But I do think that um, at this point, we're talking about a. Fraction of one percent. And that we can find that money in budget.
You have a discussion? All right, I guess I'm, I'm gonna put my two cents in here since there's no other discussion. I, I think the reality of this situation is that we're gonna continue to see rising costs, we're gonna continue to see inflation in, in this country. I believe we're gonna see less. Grant money flowing from the federal government, from the state government, and through the county to us. I think that the sales tax will ultimately unfortunately have to be the mechanism that we, we use to keep the city running at some point in time. Given the current climate. I think it would be premature to actually pass the sales tax at this point because we don't know how exactly we're gonna use it, we don't need that one point two million or whatever that estimate came out to. On the grocery tax. I, I think I came out at the very beginning saying I was opposed to it, that was somewhat aggressive. However, if we were to try to make up a budget deficit with one of the two of these, I would, I would prefer to continue to, to keep that tax in play. Now, those people are used to it, I think Alderman Demus, you kind of touched on this, right, your family is used to paying this, we're all used to paying this, the state has had this for, I don't know, a decade. Um, and, and possibly longer, um. And, and so I don't know that it's gonna impact people beyond the impact it's always had. Um, we have great mechanisms in this town to help people with food insecurity, we've got great food pantries, they're probably underfunded like every food pantry in the country. But um, we certainly do have mechanisms in place to help those most in need. Um, if we were to do something, I think I agree with the mayor, that it would be nice to be able to pass this and then not implement it, if that indeed is a provision of the, the current state statute that allows us to do this. Um, I, I'd like to be confident by, let's say, the next meeting in two weeks to, to, to know that for a fact. That we could implement this. Taxes zero percent essentially, just put it on the books and, and leave it in our back pocket for later if we indeed do have a shortfall based upon a lack of revenue from other sources. Um, I think everybody sitting around this dais up here, or whatever we call this, um, knows that we rely on grant money. To do what we do as a community, we are not self-sufficient in any way, shape, or form. And as much as we all pay uh. Taxes. Uh, everybody around this, this table up here does too, and. We absolutely need grant money to make that work, and if we don't have that grant money coming in. And we need to fix roads, we need to fix infrastructure. And we're gonna have to make hard decisions how to do that, and I'd like to defer that until we have to make the decision, but that's my personal thoughts. Now that I've said that, any other discussion?
Yeah, I don't see so.
Alderman Hallett.
Do I get a half, no?
You get as long as you want, sir.
As far as personal feeling goes. I hate the thought of any sort of tax whatsoever that we have to implement. Well, we always have to look at. How will we manage the city, what we have to do, what are priorities, once again, I'm bringing that word up. And. If we find ourselves in a shortfall. And we don't have a backup, then we have to start making cuts to services and other things. Pretty much what you just got done saying, oh, and that is uh. Do we want to find ourselves in that position? So, we have to make a decision one way or the other right now, and possibly with the idea of passing but holding, not implementing. Because I don't think it's gonna look good down the road, and I'm not a pessimist as an individual. But I just, we see the rising cost of so many things here. And. We gotta be able to keep the city functioning, that's the number one thing we have to do. So, I would. As much as I hate it, I would recommend doing the. Passing the grocery tax and put it in reserve and only you implementing it. If things get too bad, then we just don't have the funds. And we may be in, who knows what else we might have to do at that time anyway. It might still be a requirement for cuts in other things, and then the question is, where do we cut what? So, that would be my thought of.
Alderman Myers?
A question, if, if we decide to uh, to basically kind of defer this, is what I, what I'm hearing. Uh, will we have enough information to find out like, how much uh, could have collected? You know, if we uh, so say like, in twenty twenty six, if we have zero percent grocery tax, and then we decide for twenty twenty seven, we. You know, to, to add that. I know, right now, because we collect the tax, we know how much is coming in, but if we stop collecting it, will we know how much we could have collected? Does that make sense?
I don't know that there would be any mechanism for the sales to be reported. I can see if anyone from finance is able to share a differing opinion. But I can't imagine the mechanism will be in place for us to have that data.
Because that, that's gonna be the kind of information that we're gonna ask for at that point in time, is like, okay, if, if we need this much money. And we implement a one percent grocery tax at that time, what will it bring in, and, and we won't have the information?
Alderman Rondo.
We have someone here, is Sid Ants, I feel, that helps. Thank you.
Yes, no, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gallow.
Okay, so, the way the revenue estimates are derived are for the standard industrial classification codes. So, it's very difficult to ultimately break out any further than what we're already looking at. So, we can tell based on twenty twenty six with no grocery tax, and then look at what our revenue projections then are. So, twenty twenty seven, if it were to be re-implemented, and we could do a little deduction there. But as far as how the revenue is reported from the grocery stores now, it doesn't have that detail, that level of detail.
So, that mean, that means if we, if we didn't collect any grocery tax in twenty twenty six, we would have no idea how much we would have.
Well, we would see a reduction based.
Right, I know we'd get a reduction, but like, we, we don't know if it's four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand.
The four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar estimate came from reliable sources, two independent staff assessments, um, the DMMC, for example. So, we're confident that that is an accurate number. If anything, it could almost be projected to be a little bit low because of the items that not. Otherwise aren't, not accounted for just by that grocery tax industrial classification code.
Correct. So, are you confident that if we uh, if we don't implement anything in twenty twenty six, that we would have enough information to make the decision about twenty twenty seven? To say, here's how much we would grow.
So, what we will be looking at is essentially the same position that we're in right now at about the same timeframe as last year. So, we're dealing with right now, for example, seven months of estimated sales tax revenue, for example. So, our projection then for twenty twenty seven would be based on in August of next year, about that same amount of data. So, it's almost like it would take more than just a year or a fraction of a year to determine this is ultimately looks like what we ended up losing. Our standard recu- or re.
Can I help? Sure, I, I think, I think I know what you're asking, okay, yeah, so I think what he's asking is, in the, with, even with the absence of the grocery tax, would we be able to formulate what the grocery tax revenue would have been for twenty twenty six by the end of twenty twenty six?
Yes.
That helps?
Yes, okay. And it's kind of happens through magic.
No, it happens through the standard industrial uh, codes. So, every store, so grocery stores, for example, are code fifty four, look it, so you can look at all the. Stan, all the groceries, revenue that's reported under that C code and derive it.
Oh, if they tell you how much revenue they collect them.
Yes.
Even if you're not collecting any tax.
They would report the revenue that they collected, the sales tax that they collected, is what would be reported.
The, the state sales taxes.
Correct.
Ded then one percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you want to discuss it further?
I'll do it later.
All right. Is everyone else clear or unhappy?
I have a question, do we know the average amount each household is paying? For a grocery tax per year?
No, because it's not broken down, it's broken down by the grocery store. So.
So, we don't know what?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't know what. Because. Family, a lot of people pay, or if you only. That's not, there was an average.
We recently looked, I'm sorry, I didn't even.
Oh, no, that's good.
Um, about a hundred and eighteen thousand, is that correct, Kelly? Medium household income? The DMMC predicts that to be about a hundred and eighteen thousand. So, it all depends on where you shop. If you want to go to the Costco, on the Whole Foods in St. Charles, or if you want to go to West Chicago, I'll be.
Yeah. I would say, uh, that just, if you, just very simple math, four hundred twenty five thousand dollars divided by twenty six thousand people, about sixteen dollars a person, per person, yeah. Per year. Per year.
Depends on where those people are shopping.
Yeah, yeah, it's very rough there.
Yes, yeah. So, if you prefer to shop at Meyer, well, there's no West Chicago Meyer, obviously, but.
Question answered?
Yeah.
All right. Additional discussion? All right, so I'm gonna ask one time here, if there's no additional discussion, any interest in taking item twelve A or twelve B off the table for a vote? Alderman Demus, I saw first.
Well, I, I would like to take uh, twelve B off the table for. Implementing what the mayor had suggested. So, if that, I don't know how we do that, if that would be a new ordinance.
Or a second?
Yeah, I don't know if that's.
Do something with the item, that's on the table, correct?
Again, what did you say just?
Yes, we, we can't, we can't amend um, item twelve B, we have to do something with that and then.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So, if.
Off the table, right? What's up? Is anything off the table?
If we take it off the table, can we amend it then? I don't know how we do this, this is new.
So, it's, yes, I, I, my understanding is that you, once you remove it from the table, then you can make a motion to amend it. Um, but what are you seeking to, how are you seeking to amend it? Or do we want to have staff amend it for next meeting based upon direction from the council while it's on the table?
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah. But that's, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Amending it to, to state that it would be only implemented uh, after a review to see if it's necessary to uh, implement.
Yeah, I would have to count, I would have staff, um, yes.
Yeah, okay, then, then I.
So, would you like to direct staff to, to?
Just because I want to make sure that as you're making this decision, you understand that after, as of October first. If an ordinance that is approved and prepared to be implemented. Is not postmarked October first, then it will not start collecting the revenue until April. We will not get that revenue from January to April, so just make sure that you understand that if we were to go this route. The soonest that we would then be able to start collecting would be April, and it would be at a. Taking a wild guess, about half of the four hundred and twenty five thousand that would be possible at that time.
Then, um, I have a question then, um. How, I mean, I know we have the October first deadline, so is, is tonight like the deadline, or can it?
It would be the next meeting.
For sure, a hundred percent.
Would be the deadline to start collecting money January one.
Right, okay.
And if we don't make the movement to collect money January one, then we could start collecting money in April.
Okay, then does staff have time then to prepare the new?
The staff would work with Ansel Bling, I imagine that the modified ordinance would only need one or two lines. The staff would work with Ansel Bling. I imagine that the modified ordinance would only need one or two lines.
Yes, I don't imagine that it will take, it, it shouldn't take longer than two weeks to.
Then I guess we leave it to you then, right? And then do we make a motion to?
Oh, it's, it's direction to staff, so it's not really even a motion, I don't believe.
No, just direction.
Any additional discussion about sending this to staff to, to make those adjustments? Done? Okay. Is everybody generally in agreement? Thumbs up? I know we're just, we started using these informal things with the mayor. Alright, we all got, we got thumbs up. You can please take that to Sinosino and run with it, let's, let's go for it.
Direction noted.
Those on the phone didn't get to see the thumbs. Alright, so moving on from item twelve, item thirteen, new business. New business, I guess I'll, I'll read this and then if we take a motion, we can take a motion. Uh, item number thirteen A, resolution number twenty-five R zero zero six four. A resolution approving a certain employment agreement with John Sterrett, interim community development director. Can I get a motion? Alderman Switek. Was that a comment or a, a, a second?
Yeah, no, I have a, a question.
Alderman Rano for the second. Now discussion.
It says like the, uh, the contract is the, the next. See, I mean, it's fair, I make the percent extra pay for, uh, and I call highest merit increase.
So. Is there a typo that it says city administrator somewhere it shouldn't or?
Oh. Yes. Yes, that's why it says the thirty-first. It was just like a normal high, like how increases.
So if a merit increase is available, we're saying that for taking on this interim role. This employee would qualify for the merit increase. To provide a little context. Typically, if a merit increase is available to the organization, the way employees. Qualify for the merit increase is by achieving their goals that were set earlier in the year. However, if this employee takes on this interim role, then things that were originally in his list of goals. He will no longer be able to focus on because he will be focusing on responsibilities associated with this interim position. It's a similar provision for what was used with me. Because the goals that I had in place as assistant city administrator, many of them were focused on some IT projects. Or some HR projects, those are now having to be set aside so that I can focus on the interim city administrator duties. So we don't wanna penalize someone for helping us through a transition period. So if a merit increase is available, we automatically give them the opportunity to qualify for that full merit increase. Because it can no longer be tied to the goals of their previous position.
Any other discussion? And we'll go to a vote. Please call roll.
Okay, Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Hallid. Alderman Carreto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That passes. Item number fourteen, correspondence and, oh, sorry, I missed thirteen B. Thirteen B, discussion impossible action to confirm commission appointments. Hopefully you're gonna say the same thing I was gonna say. Alderman Rano.
I'm just gonna move to table, there's no applications or.
We, we have, actually, indeed, we do have quite a few applications, is my understanding, but the mayor being sick has not had a chance.
That's what I'm saying, we don't have them.
Correct, we, so we don't have it in front of us. The motion to table has been placed on the table, it's seconded by Alderman Demus. Uh, roll call for table. Sorry.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Santiago. Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Hallid.
Aye.
Alderman Carreto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto. Alderman Myers.
Aye.
That passes. Moving on to item number fourteen, correspondence and announcements. Before I do upcoming meetings, any other correspondence and announcements anybody would like to bring forward? Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
The mayor beat me to it. We, we have our, um. Mexican Independent State Festival, Sunday, September fourteenth from twelve to six. Um. Delighted to see everyone come and celebrate with us. And then it was el festival de fiestas patrias el domingo. Catorce de septiembre, del doce pm hasta tarde, todos están invitados a copaguenos a celebrar.
Is there gonna be a parade?
No, not this year, hopefully next year.
Alright, one other announcement, uh, the mayor mentioned it in his comments earlier, uh, the historical society's ice cream social. Uh, it will be this Saturday, I believe it begins at noon. Although I check out their website or Facebook to, to make sure because. I'm, I'm actually scheduled to be there earlier, but I think it actually officially begins at noon. Uh, it's a great day out, the weather should be really nice, um. A lot of activities, a lot of things to help fund the cruise house and the historic society, uh, as well as, uh, friends of the city museum. Uh, they're all in partnership together, so it's a great location right down here on Main Street. Park right here in, into the city ball lot, walk down a couple blocks and take, take part in that activity. Um, I believe it's noon till four. Check.
I believe it's one to four.
One, one to four? Thank you, mayor. Upcoming meeting, September fourth, infrastructure committee. September eighth, development committee, and September fifteenth, public affairs committee. Into that, which takes us to number sixteen, adjournment. Alderman Hallid has motion to adjourn. Alderman Alcantara Garcia for the second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, everyone.
Maybe you had, it was a perfect meeting.
You know, you could still get ejected from a baseball game even if.
I have to throw in the bat.